Okay, we're just waiting.
Now, is this, this is gonna be video?
Yes.
Yep, it's on internet and video, channel four, same as always.
No, no, I, I don't mean channel four, but it doesn't stream live?
Yes, it's on, on, on internet and then also channel four, so you don't have, yeah, but it should be on your computer if you wanna put up.
Sorry, I'm talking to the upcoming meeting staff.
Correct. There should be a video link.
Is it? At the bottom of the page?
We need Allison.
Counselors, counselors, we are on air. The lights are on.
Allison, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, alright then. Okay. Where's Kathy?
She's there.
On record or what? On record. Thank you. We are, excuse me, calling to order the Lincoln City Urban Renewal Agency meeting of March 23rd, 2020 at 5:32. We are, some of us, some of the members of council, I mean of the agency are remotely calling in, and so this is how we will run the meeting. Counselors, please get your phones. Thank you. I, Kathy will call the roll first of the, of the members and then of the staff, so those who are listening and can, and those who are watching can hear, can hear who is here. So I think I wanna go first to roll call.
Deanna Hinton?
Here.
Riley Hogland?
Here.
Diane Kuz?
Here.
Rick Mark?
Here.
Mitch Parsons?
Here.
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
And Judy Casper?
Here.
Okay, as we have the ability and the authority to change our agenda, is there any agenda changes requested? Allison?
Not for me, thank you.
Okay, um, okay, Allison Robertson is with us on the phone and...
Ron Chandler, city manager.
Richard Appicello is here and also Chief Palmer. Okay. I just, and I'm, just wanna jump down to that this meeting is available online. If you go to the city's website and go under Agenda and Video, you can watch it, or you can watch us on, on channel four, which is live now. We have a short agenda, and Allison, if you wouldn't mind giving us just a quick overview of our agenda item, which is Economic Development Facade Improvement Loan Request, URFI 2020-01.
I'd be happy to, thank you, Chair Hinton and fellow agency members. This is actually a request for a facade improvement loan. The goal of the facade improvement loan program is to provide renovations and rehabilitation funds for commercial properties within the urban renewal district to assist in alleviating life conditions, to improve building structures, and to complement local design characteristics. The program offers ten, sorry, zero percent interest with a loan term of up to 10 years. We received one loan application and forwarded it along to our loan processing partners at Oregon County West Council of Government, and they completed the paperwork and assessment. Then they made a positive recommendation to the loan request, and all the program requirements have been met. We did meet with the Urban Renewal Agency's Loan Committee last year to talk about this loan request. At that time, the request was for a mobile food cart pod, and because the city had not yet finalized the mobile food cart pod ordinance, this applicant said, well, we want to do a project, we want to do a food cart pod. If we can't do a food cart pod, we would like to still do a different project. But since the food cart ordinance was passed, they would like to move forward with their original idea of doing a food cart pod, and they are requesting to borrow $150,000 to improve the appearance of that property. The loan funds would be for a physical structure allowing for indoor and outdoor seating, to install some restrooms, and potentially do some rooftop seating or apartments that they may do down the road or they may do in the first phase. The loan recommendation letter should be in the public packet, and the Cog has said that there's a minimal risk for this loan, and the debt-to-income ratio is right, they have adequate collateral, and it meets all the intentions of the program. This, this particular loan recipient also has another loan with the Urban Renewal Agency, and all of those payments and terms required have been met. No lapses or anything like that in payment, so staff would recommend approval of this loan, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to ask those members on the phone if you have any questions and staff, and say your name first, please. No questions? How about those?
Chairman Hinton?
Yes.
Yeah, and Rick Mark, I don't know.
Okay.
I'll get here a little bit. I'm still confused about, it, it sounds like this project is maybe sort of like bleachers? Some people have a place to sit where they get their food out? I don't understand the rooftop seating or apartments.
Allison?
Yes, this is Allison. This project will be some kind of a building. That building will have indoor and outdoor seating, will have restrooms somewhere on the property, whether it be part of that building or not, and on that upper part of that building, there may or may not be rooftop seating, or may or may not be apartments. They have not yet gotten into design because they have, they have been waiting to see if they would be able to apply for a food truck pod, and now that is the direction that they are gonna go for this project. So staff could be involved with this project, keeping in mind that they would have to go through the necessary permitting requirement for that ordinance. Should they get permitted and move forward with their construction project, then they would only receive the funds as the work is completed.
Okay.
Okay, and then, I, so to be clear in my head, I'm, this is under a, an economic development tool that we call the facade improvement loan request, but there is no existing building, there's no facade that's being improved, this is just money to help them with their project.
Exactly.
So we're not making that statement, we're just saying that for this particular property, whether there's a building on it or not, that in this particular case, it would be an improvement to the location, that we are considering that a facade improvement.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Anyone else on the phone have a question? Okay, thank you, either of you in person?
Chairman, I guess Allison, on that same question that Mr. Mark had, the program description, again, you know, I guess I came up with the same just question, and where within our description is new construction, building a new building, you know, fit? I guess I just wanna make sure we're not stretching too far. And you, you described it, Allison, as the, the lot may be empty now, but by building a structure somehow that creates a facade?
Yes, it's more, in this case, it's more about removing a light as tradition. There, let's see, in, in past loans, we have issued facade improvement in a couple of different scenarios. One, for example, being in a fire of a building, and one being in what was intended to be a renovation, and then when people got into the actual project, realized that the building did need to come down completely. So when we talk about stretching, like you said, with this program to, you know, it's not just the siding and windows and roofs, or it was facade improvement. It is an improvement to the appearance of this location, which we have done in, in past examples as well. Then in that case, we want to make sure that the equity position and the collateral, the land value and/or the total collateral that, for this loan applicant, is sufficient to cover if there's not a building there. And in this case, the finances work out to the point of it being a minimal risk. So that's why we're recommending it. Now, if we were in the situation where, let's say, there's a very large commercial building, and it gets completely demoed, and the person doesn't have at least 30% equity, and the person doesn't have enough collateral just with what they have in the land, and they turn down the building and then start to build a new building, but we get half of a building and then the person can't really make the project happen, that would be something we wanna avoid. We wanna make sure that no matter what level the project is in, basically before the project starts, that we would be in a position of minimal risk using these public dollars, and that is how this loan recommendation has come forward.
Okay.
I don't know if that answered your question exactly.
Well, it tells me that, one, we've got some history of something similar, and that's what I was looking for, that we weren't plowing new ground. I guess the, the other thing I had was, when would our funds go into the project? First or last?
Yeah, that would be up to our loan officer to determine. We don't yet know if there will be other conventional financing involved. When the application was initially submitted, the estimated project cost was around $400,000, and the loan request is $150,000. So we do believe that we will get good leveraging of this dollar into the project, but, yeah.
I, I guess my question is, or concern, and is that, you know, I, those numbers sound good as long as we're the last 150 that goes into a construction loan, so that's already, say, 300, you know, worth of material, you know, coming out of the ground. Do you follow my, I don't wanna be the first in with a construction dispersment.
Right. The, the way that the loan officer is suggesting is that it doesn't matter if we're first in or last in, there's already enough financial security without any building to have reduced risk.
Except for we don't necessarily want, you know, we want a building, we don't want the raw land. That's why I would disagree, but the, the other, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I guess, given this borrower has another loan with the agency, I'm wondering if we should tie these two loans together? Maybe one default defaults both?
That's something that I can mention to our loan officer.
Not, not that, and I'm not even expecting that, it's just, you know, again, public dollars, and I don't even know what the amount is on the other loan, but it, it just keeps, you know, if one project kinda has trouble, at least you have leverage on the other one that's perhaps cash flowing, that the proceeds come towards the loan, the, except one loan that's having trouble or vice versa.
Yeah, I, I believe that the other project, considering our loan existing, is part of the equity equation in the total picture of risk.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other questions?
So, Madam Chair?
Member Casper?
It says equity prior to improvement is 20%, does that mean they got 20%
Their own money.
Of their own money into this investment of the purchase price, is that correct?
It would seem that way.
Okay.
That why, in theory, what I was, they're 20%, 20%, or, you know, a bank loan, and then our money comes last, and the project is well underway before you disperse your $150,000.
So Allison, just to follow up, is there a way to, to build that into a loan agreement?
Yes, if you wanted to make that a requirement in this case, you would have that authority. Usually, we've left it up to the loan officer to figure out how and when those dollars get dispersed. But I'm, I'm happy to make whatever requirement you would like, and with the understanding that I, I don't know how that would impact the ability of a project getting done, and I mean that literally, I really don't know if it would or wouldn't impact the project. So there's no harm in, in making the requirement. I just don't know how, you know, I'm not involved in the other conversations with conventional financing. So feel free to make any direction you would like, and then if we need to come back, I can, or it would just go forward if, if, if all was favorable.
So let me just ask the folks on the phone, are there any other questions or comments from the members on the phone?
This is Riley Hogland, I just wanna make sure, I mean, if we, we do move forward, it's okay. If we don't move forward, then that's okay as well, but nothing's gonna happen right now, right? Go ahead.
Allison?
Well, the loan request is in and before you, and we have taken it to the loan committee. I think that the applicant would still be interested in doing the project, but without this loan, it may make the project take longer to get on the ground because of financing.
Right.
So...
So if we, if we're able to have a, a funds-up or a funds-down on this this evening, that would help inform the applicant as to how to proceed with their property.
Yeah, I, I would see, quite frankly, I think rather you're, it may not happen without this financing level. One, 'cause it's probably cheaper than the conventional loan, and it, it gets it into a debt service if, you know, they can carry a qualified combination.
Allison, this is Deanna again, so did I understand you correctly that the loan officer looked at the loan that these folks have with us already, and that even with that, they can, they don't see an issue with, they actually think that this would be a good loan to lend, is that correct?
That's correct. The, the assessment from the Cog is that this loan is a minimal risk. They have looked at the total financial portfolio of the applicant, and that includes our existing loan.
Okay, I just have one other question before I ask the members for their thinking, but we, because we are now in a new world with this coronavirus, does that have any potential impact on the reason that they have the original loan with us or on this new request?
Well, they had the original loan long, long before the virus.
Right, I know, but is the virus, are there any impacts to their business, I know?
Yeah, how do you, how do you know? I think the, the underwriting was done prior to. And so that's the unknown world, and that's also why
A new life.
Why I think you need to tie things up. 'Cause I, I think great people, great borrowers, great project, but it just gives you options. And the, the answer too is if it doesn't work, they can clearly come back to us and say, you know, why? Or remove this or that, 'cause I think all around the room, we'd like to see that, that move forward. So, but I think we have a responsibility with public dollars to make sure we don't turn into a grant.
Okay, are there any other?
Yeah, this is Allison. It's really, I think it's important with this program that we keep in mind that we are the funding mechanism, and that for property owners to move forward with their own project, they have to go through any regular processes, architectural, structural engineer, site plan review, building permit, inspection, all of those things for any component of any project. And really, it's just a matter of, does this project fit the objectives of the Urban Renewal Agency? And, you know, in the past, the Urban Renewal Agency has made available loans to applicants, and those applicants have then decided not to proceed with their project. So if you approve this loan, and if the current coronavirus situation doesn't improve sufficiently for the property owner to feel comfortable with going forward with this type of a project, then I imagine they wouldn't. Now, you know, if you approve it and it do go forward, and it means that loan payments can't be made, that wouldn't be any different than any of our other existing loan recipients that are at some risk of default due to an economic condition that we have anticipated. So I think that you're keen to be asking those questions, but it's not anything that we can answer, and it's up to you to decide if you want to approve this particular loan and then basically let that, let an applicant decide if they're going to use it. Remember, they don't start paying on the loan until they take their first draw. And their first draw is only based on work completed. And in order to complete work, they would need to go through all the necessary requirements to get to building permit and any other thing that's needed for this project. So there are processes and procedures in place to make sure, you know, we're not just cutting somebody a check for $150,000. And it's up to you to decide if you want to provide the opportunity to a property owner to hopefully make a calculated assessment about if it's a project they should proceed with or not.
Okay, thank you, Member Casper.
That's sort of clarified a question I had. So if they don't make payments until they accept the loan, that means that the loan could be dispersed after the downturn of these current economic times, right? I mean, we, we get approved the loan and it could sit there until they use it.
Until they make the first draw.
Until they make the first draw, which could be an extended length of time, which would be more beneficial to their finances.
Yeah, I, I would think, Allison, that we have some kind of a term of use it or lose it kind of thing too, though. It's not, it wouldn't be sitting out there for a year un, un-advanced, so to speak.
That's correct. We usually request that people complete their project within a year. And we haven't really run into that problem in the past. This one is kind of new, and, I mean, in terms of a new ordinance and a new sort of a project in town, so I know that there will be some due diligence on the part of the property owner to make sure that they have everything that they need in terms of steps and requirements to move forward, so, yeah.
Okay. Anyone on the phone have any more questions, comments? Okay, I would entertain a motion from anyone?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move to recommend the approval of the requested facade improvement loan, number URFI 2020-01, $150,000.
Is there a second?
This is Diana, a second.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second. This is going to be a roll call vote, Kathy could you?
Uh, could we have discussion?
Oh, yes, sorry, discussion.
Judy, would, would you, you're, you're not concerned or revise your motion to direct the loan disperser to be, utilize the funds last and to cross-collateralize this loan with their other urban renewal property?
I accept that friendly amendment.
So you would?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion has been amended. Would you restate your motion with the corrections, with the changes?
Okay, need assistance. I move to recommend the approval of the requested facade improvement loan, number URFI 2020-01, $150,000 to be consolidated with the...
If I can?
Yes, so.
To direct the servicer to disperse this loan amount last in the construction process, and to cross-collateralize this loan with the property that the other urban renewal loan is on.
Okay. Diane, are you okay with this change?
I am, okay.
Okay, so we have revised motion with assistance from Member Anderson and a second of the revised motion to Diane. Now, just before, I'd just like Kathy to, city recorder, if you were able to get that?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, there's motion, a second, any more discussion?
The only, just for, I'm not, no, I just wanna make sure that the agency understands, and Allison, that this would be the proposal back if, if it's approved, and that, Allison, if, if that gives them something when they go to their traditional banker and looking at the whole package, if there's a piece that's blowing up the transaction, I, I would ask you to come back to us, revisit this loan criteria.
Elaine Howard is now in the conference.
Okay, that was a question, Allison?
Yes, thank you, I hear you loud and clear, and understand that if that becomes a hurdle, either one of those conditions becomes a hurdle, that I will bring it back to the agency for consideration.
Great, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the table, it's with the second, and now we're ready for a roll call, please.
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
Judy Casper?
Yes.
Deanna Hinton?
Yes.
Riley Hogland?
Yes.
Diane Kuz?
Yes.
Rick Mark?
Yes.
Mitch Parsons?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. Are there any other comments by members before we close the meeting? All right, thank you, we are adjourned at 6:01.